Good morning, Hatfield. Welcome to the July tenth meeting of the Selectmen here at Memorial Town Hall. I guess first of all, I'd like to just bring up a few of the items that we're going to be covering down today. And that's, we were going to have people in for the Center School, another possibility that we're looking at. But I guess we kind of messed up on a date, so that'll be next week's meeting. The other thing will be the Town Garage Outback budget closeouts. We do have some resignations and we also have some appointments and a lot of positions that, if anybody in town is interested in serving on any of the boards, to please contact Paul or the Town Clerk Louise and put your name in. We're going to have the DPW Director's report. And we may take a break around like quarter after ten or quarter of?
Quarter after nine.
Quarter after nine. So we're going to go into executive session. We have a couple of contracts to fill out, sit down with a couple of folks that aren't going to be available at 10 o'clock. So we'll be back in regular session after that. So without any more speaking, anybody have any public announcements?
I don't have anything.
All right. Community forum. Anybody here for community forum?
My name is Christopher Smith and I have served on the Hatfield Cable Access for the, I'm sorry, Cable Advisory Committee for the last nine months. In December, after the third station manager in less than a year had departed, we, the Cable Access Committee, asked the Board of Selectmen to allow us to make HCTV a true public access media resource for all of Hatfield. The Selectmen agreed and gave us until June 30th to do this. I also took over as station manager as an interim position. And together with the Cable Access Committee, we worked to increase viewership and by doing so renewed the town, to renew the town's Comcast license agreement for far greater benefits, both financial and with more local stations, channels. Our first step was to conduct a townwide survey, something never tried before. And with a better than 10% return, we learned what folks wanted to see. Folks watched Selectmen's meetings, but they wanted to see other board meetings as well. There was a strong support for Hatfield Currents and a desire to see more local produced shows. School sports and events was another popular choice. Music shows such as polka time, outdoor programs such as fishing and gardening, and of course, classic TV and movies were also popular requests. It is safe to say that the Cable Advisory Committee had accomplished more in seven months than had been done in the previous Cable Access Committee over the past seven years. And Comcast noticed it. In fact, in May, early May, the Cable Access Committee had negotiated a verbal agreement for a total of over 607,000 over 10 years, or six times the 2002 agreement. In June, the Board of Selectmen did something strange. They put the complete control of the CAC, I'm sorry, CAC and HCTV in the hands of the town administrator, a person who has only worked in Hatfield two months and had never viewed the programming. Was this a prelude to censorship and government control of your public access viewing? That's a question. On June 30th, came and went and without a station manager, the programming on HCTV has ceased. Yesterday, I received an email from the town administrator stating I would not continue as station manager considering all the controversy I had created. What's the controversy? Recording public posted meetings? Is that a punishable offense? And how is this open and transparent government?
Thank you, Chris.
I have a question about the community forum. You mentioned that at 9:45, you're going to, going to executive at 9:45 for the report meeting the HCTV station manager?
No.
No. Contracts.
The DPW contracts.
So I will be able to be here at this time or are you going to, into executive at that?
You won't be here during the executive session, but we'll go into executive session for about 15 minutes and then come back out and continue the meeting.
But what I'm asking is that HCTV station manager going to be under the executive?
No.
No.
No. There are certain rules and criteria that has to happen if that were to take place. And it's not.
Okay, because otherwise I wouldn't speak.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else for community forum? Okay. Next on the agenda is the Town Garage slash?
Minutes.
Oh, okay. Minutes, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of five, April 2012.
A second.
Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of June 19th, 2012.
A second.
Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, I'm going to abstain from the April 5th. See, and I wasn't there. All right, posted business. Town Hall Garage.
Okay, I got a call last night. Mark is coming today at noon time to meet over here to go over the changes that we had talked about.
Okay.
So he will be here at noon time and we'll go through that. He was on vacation, so that's why we didn't get, we didn't hook up. So that's, we just need a little extra time. And he said that he can change it, not a problem getting them where it's supposed to be.
All right, so that can be done by today, hopefully? The end of today?
My part will be done today. It's up, Mark, he'll probably have it in a couple of days and then he'll be able to go off for bed.
All right. Everybody happy with that?
Don't ask me.
All right, we're this close. Go ahead. But see if we can push that along. All right, budget closeout.
Yeah, the only thing I have to remember on that is that it still appears that all the accounts that are in deficit, a total of about $20,000. There is $32,000 remaining in the reserve fund. So the Finance Committee has posted a meeting for tomorrow evening to deal with those budget items. So it appears at this point that there will not be necessary any inter-fund transfers. It can all be dealt with from the reserve fund.
Okay, any questions?
I got a question on cemetery. How do we get $2,300 over on the cemetery?
Yeah, that's what I was going to.
So.
Is that in salaries?
Yeah. I thought we pretty much, well, it was just extra mowings or?
Yeah, well, because we have, you know, because of Vince's condition, we had to bring on the other kid. So we have two people working there.
Okay.
That wasn't budgeted.
I see.
I do have one question. Do we need to vote? Does the Board of Selectmen need first to vote on using the finance reserve?
No.
Finance committee votes on the reserve.
I understand that, but we don't need to vote that first?
No. No.
Okay. We vote if we're going to switch the?
If we're going to, right. If we're going to move.
The reserve fund is totally under the control of the Finance Committee.
All right, so we're all set with that.
Yep.
Great.
Okay. Thank the Finance Committee for making our job a little bit.
We'll do.
Well, actually, we came out pretty well.
Yeah?
Most of this is storm stuff, the trees.
Yeah.
For which will be reimbursed.
That's the big issue.
And that was taken into consideration, all the damage and everything.
Actually, the trees and plus, I'm sure the fuel expense went up quite a bit, picking the brush up around town. So.
Did we up that this year?
Yes.
Okay, we upped the fuel charge. That's okay.
Up the fuel count?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Resignations and appointments. As I said at the beginning, we do have a number of positions I think that need to be filled. We do have one.
I move to approve the appointment of Ms. Dorothy Smars to the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move to accept the resignation of Chris Smith from the Cable Advisory Committee.
Second.
Should you mention the term on that, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I'm sorry.
What's that?
The term.
The term on the, I believe it's one year, isn't it? I thought that's where I was reading in here this morning.
For term of one year.
Yep.
To amend that. Ms. Smars?
May I ask if you speak a little louder from the front of this one year as well?
Okay, sure.
Okay, motion's been made to accept the resignation of Christopher Smith from Cable Advisory Committee. It was a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your time served. All right, and then again, we have just running down this list. We do have.
On the Library Building Committee?
Yep.
I would move to abolish the Board of Selectmen position on the Library Building Committee.
You do away with it? Yeah, I agree with that. I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have Cable Advisory. There's an opening, Consul on Aging. Here's an opening, one. We just filled the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee.
There's a second one.
And there is a second one. So anybody, again, interested in any of these positions, please get a hold of either Paul or Louise at the Town Clerk's office. Emergency Management, Planning Committee, Energy Committee. The Library Committee is also set.
No, they have one.
Or they, yeah, I guess they do have one.
Yeah.
All right. Open Space Committee. The Police, I'm not sure what that one is for on the police.
Yeah, I'm not.
I was looking at that and I can't figure out what it is, but.
I'll ask Tom about that one because the last, the last one we appointed, but I'm not sure if he's even still an officer. He might not be an officer. I'll check with Tom today.
Okay, Zoning Board of Appeals. We have one.
Position.
Right.
That's a full member.
That's a full member. And I believe that's it. So again, if anybody interested, sign up. All right, I think at this time, we are going to go into executive session. If one of you want to make the motion. This is for contracts.
Got the sheet there?
I move to, I move the Board of Selectmen enter executive session under Rule Three for the purposes of discussing, for purposes of contracting discussions with non-union personnel. And Chairman so declares that open session would be detrimental to the interests of the Board of Selectmen. And the Board will return to open session.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
All in.
Adamski? Aye.
Boyle, aye.
And we will be returning. Thank you. We sat down with the building inspector and the fire chief, discussed their contracts and they accepted it, so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the fire chief's position be increased to $29 per hour. Do one at a time.
Okay, motion's been made, second?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'd also like to make a motion that the building inspector's salary be increased to $26.99 per hour.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that covers that. And we do have a few more, but we'll continue on with our DPW Director.
Thank you. Just a few things. Yesterday, we, again, planted trees throughout town. We planted 20 trees under the CPC funding. There's still a few left for this round, so if anybody's interested, please come in and make out the forms. It went very well. Sarah's been a great help with us. She made all the phone calls last night to where they were located, to the people's homes and, you know, encouraged them to keep watering them, especially in this time where it hasn't rained in a while. So hopefully, the trees that were planted will be watered throughout the week or two until we get some significant rain. But again, I want to thank everybody that, you know, helped out in that project that went very well. The other thing is the ramp. I met with Ken Georgie this morning about the ramp. His feelings were, what I expected is that to take the plaza part of it out is not going to, you know, decrease the budget by half. We have $100,000 from the CPA. It's not going to cut the project in half. The low bid was 180 and change. So I don't know what direction you would like to go in this project. I think that anything that we do out front should be done professionally and to keep the historic value of the building there. You just don't want to throw up a handicap ramp out there, so maybe we have to relook at the project. I do have this for you.
Phil, you got, oh, good, thank you.
I have the plans, I have the book, so.
Because what was his explanation when he talked about the brass railings? I mean, we talked about it.
There's no brass railings. That, that's not it.
I went back and looked at it.
No, it wasn't the brass railings. He said that the railing, the railings are costly because of the historic part of it, to do the railings as were presented on a plan. They're not brass, they're not bronze, they're not anything like that. They're galvanized steel. So that was a question that I had him answer. The only thing that he did say is that the cost is because of the utilities, the concrete costs. That's what drove the cost of the project up. So, I mean, it's up to you which direction we want to go.
It wasn't, it was no, there was no brass in there. I went back and looked at specs.
Did you see the specs? Because I didn't get the specs until just now.
They're not.
The other thought, and Phil had the same thought, is maybe took, take into a flip-flop, put that ramp curving out towards the flagpole and go around the flagpole out to the street that way. And same type of ramp, same type of situation, just flip it over. That way, we, we don't put it where all the utilities are and touch the utilities.
But I don't know if there's enough room on that side.
If, I, two comments. One, if we're going to make that one way, we got emergency vehicles racing by that way, is that really where you want to have people walking to? I mean, that, it would seem to be a safety.
It would go out to the sidewalk, it wouldn't go into that road.
It seemed to be a safety thing. But the other thing, I would propose, rather than trying to do it on the fly here, that we table it for now and then have Phil come back with a couple of options for us and.
I mean, we still, we still have monies too available and.
Oh, yes.
They do, I believe that was for one or two handicap bathrooms? I don't know if you, either one of you want to?
That was included in the article, handicap bathroom and ramps.
Right.
So.
I mean, I don't know if either one of you would want to look into the possibility. And I'm sure it's going to be a little, little costly because, again, you're going to be ripping out ceilings and walls and everything else, so.
So as part of tabling this for the moment, we'll also look at the same time in parallel, the plan that we're going to use, go forward with for the Town Hall. And at that point, we can use or decide, do we want to take some money that originally we were planning to allocate for the ramp to the, immediately, to a more immediate use for the Town Hall, meaning restrooms, first floor restroom?
Well, I mean, that's an option.
We'll take it under advisement and then we'll move forward on that.
All right. Okay, so we'll take it under advisement.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, and all in favor? Continue.
Do you have any questions or that's a vote if?
Bridge Street signage, take care of that?
Yes.
Okay. Landfill, have you heard any more? I sent that note to you that this Hilltown Resource Management Group is out of the Northampton landfill as of 1 July. They've made other arrangements.
And that was the anticipated closing date. And it's extended into 13. I talked to Ned Huntley over there and, you know, extended into 13. We have some options. Like I said, our trucking outfit that we hire has said that we could definitely have an option to bring it right to the incinerator in Springfield, so, over to Murph. So, I mean, we do have some options out there.
Can you get pricings and give us some options? That way, we can, well, it's a really, you know, you to present it to us and just get the options out there in writing and whatever.
Well, we just, all I care about, one, we don't wait till the last minute and two, that we do it in times that we can budget for it.
Okay. And, you know, my discussions with the trucking outfit is that it might be cheaper to bring it right to the incinerator, so.
So if that's the case, we can save money and go from there. So get us a contract, a estimated contract.
I'll get you a copy.
Yeah, but let them give us a proposal that we can use, right?
Route 5 and 10, water sewer infrastructure?
I sent you the note from Michael. He is putting, he asked, to reapply, we have to go through the whole assessor's process again about map and parcel and what's zoned and what's not zoned for the area we're considering to ask for the grant for. So he contacted the assessor's office this week. She provided all the documentation to him, so he's just putting it together, going to the Masswork Grants. But again, I stressed to him that we want to meet with Victoria Maguire prior to putting in the grant so we can get some direction of, is this a yes, no? What do we have to cut or what can we increase into it? Now that we have a significant $2.5 million project that the town has funded. So, you know, that's definitely in our favor. It's just a matter of how are we going to structure it? So we're not over and above.
Well, I only raise it because I think the submissions due in August.
August, correct.
And so the July is the review time.
Yeah.
Jeff, before, I want just a clarification. On the one before that, getting a proposal, we're talking about getting a proposal from the hauler?
We'll get an estimate.
A written proposal, that way we can move forward with it if we're going to have it.
I don't know if we can get a written proposal. I think we can just get a cost estimate because that might have to go out to bid anyways if we're going to sever our contract eventually with Northampton.
Well, if we do away with it, then that's maybe what we ought to look into.
Yeah, I just want to get an estimate of the costs.
Okay.
Okay.
For budgeting purposes.
Correct. The other thing I have is that I talked to M&amp;S Electric. They're going to start, I think, next week on the library project, the fire alarm system over there. I talked to them, so he's all set.
Okay. And this conduit?
The conduit, good, that's, glad you brought that up. I met with, again, M&amp;S Electric the other day about it. And he said that Western Mass Electric was supposed to send us an invoice for their portion of it, and which I did receive. I sent them the invoice, I paid for the invoice for their part of it, the Western Mass Electric. So I'm sure as soon as they get the money, they'll provide a work order and we'll get going up over there. I met with Bob Betzel the other day, told him where we were in the project because they're wanting to get going here. So I, just a matter of us putting the conduit, pulling the wire for the one meter and they are all set after that, so.
All right, no, that's all we're going to do is put the conduit in and then one or is going to take care of it and the compaction and all that other stuff.
Yes, they're going to reclaim the whole parking lot over there, the whole basketball court.
But I guess what I'm saying is when you put the conduit underneath that ground, let them backfill it. That way, they're going to guarantee the work over there. Especially if the court is going to go over the top of it. The last thing you want to do is have an indentation there. So you may just have to fence it off for the time being until they come in and finish it up.
They're all set to go.
Okay. All right. If that's it, nothing else?
That's it, things are good. We've hired, we've hired a summer help, another one's starting tomorrow. We hired a full-time water operator, so things are good.
Who is the full-time water guy?
Brandon Daniels. He's from Hat, Hadley. He has all his licenses, so he worked for us last summer up there.
Okay, we put it, put it in the papers, advertised, everything? How many applicants you get?
Four.
Four. Okay.
All right, if that's it with you, we'll go to Paul.
I've just got a couple of quick items to mention. At the last meeting, I spoke about postponing the hiring of a permanent station manager until the contract with Comcast was completed. So I would have a better idea and, you know, any applicants would have a better idea of, you know, what the financial situation of the station is. So in the meantime, I've asked John Novak, who was the original station manager, to take over as interim and he has agreed. So I think that that will work out well. In regards to the contract, I spoke with the attorney who's working with us on that yesterday. And there have been some comments forwarded to him last week. He's going to take those comments and forward them to the attorney for Comcast and see where we stand. So hopefully, we'll be able to wrap up this, this contract, you know, sooner rather than later. But, you know, once Comcast gets a hold of it, who knows how long, you know, they'll be sitting with it for, before we get an agreement. So that's where we stand there. The only other thing I'd like to mention is that we do have the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission under contract for the solar project. Yesterday, I met with Dave Elvin from PVPC to go over the scope of the project. So, you know, we're underway with that.
Very good.
Can I speak on these contracts? Do I need to move?
Yes, please.
Well, I also spoke to the attorney on the contract.
Just, Pat, could you just, Pat, could you just mention your name?
I'm Pat Katie and I'm Chair of the Advisory Board, the Cable Advisory Board. I spoke to the attorney yesterday and I have to call him back today. He has not yet read our draft that we had sent to him. He is going to look at it and he wants to get back to me today. And if there's going to be any changes or not, he will let me know. And if there is, then we'll have to go over that again. Or if there isn't, then he will direct it into Comcast. But one of the things that I'm really concerned about is the channel itself, this Channel 15, is because Comcast is very interested in having local channels. And now that we have an interim manager, I just want to know if everything is going to be broadcast the way that it has in the past. Are we going to keep going, doing board meetings? And are we going to be doing the Hatfield Currents? Are we going to be showing the movies? Are we going to do an interest to Hatfield? Because I've been getting a lot of calls about why nothing is running and, and I just tell them, call Paul. You know, because I don't know. I mean, we're still not running. And I don't know when it's going to be set up. And I, and I think the, the less that Comcast knows about this, the better so that we can get a renewal of the contract. But I, I just want to know how is this going to proceed as it has in the past? But I, I, I just want to know, how is this going to proceed as it has in the past? And how is, like, our new interim manager, how is he going to be paid? And, you know, some, we do have that money allotted from the town, there's $7,000. But there's already $1,000 that's been earmarked, and so that we have to be careful about the monies that go from there. And when the contract does come in, we will be given X amount of money, which is gonna be quite a bit of money, which we, at the original time, were looking for equipment that is really needed. In that studio, never mind having a robotic, we're talking about the robotic studio, because we, how close are we to having this here? But for now, we need to have something that's going to be really being able to run over there at the school where we do have a studio. So, getting back to my question is, how is this going to run? Is it going to run on the same degree and level as it has in the past? Are we going to be going to all the board meetings? Are we going to be showing all the things we have? Or what is going to be happening with the local channel? I mean, we have only three members. Sometimes we can't get a quorum to even meet so that we can discuss things. And, and I know that we went to Paul and we just, we had, we interviewed the interviewees. And I was kinda surprised when I heard that it was not even a person that was interviewed for the job that was taken over as the interim manager. So, I suppose it's whatever the town administrator's choice is. I mean, that's, that's what you have allowed him to do because you have put him in that position. But I also know that last meeting that we had here last week, that you directed Paul to give Chris a call and ask him if he wants to be interim manager, which was never done. And I thought that as you gave a director to the town administrator, that it should be followed through. And I thought at least the courtesy of that call should have been there. And it didn't happen. And, and all these other things have happened that we didn't know on the committee. We knew nothing about it. We went and interviewed and finally, we did tell Paul who it was that we wanted to, that we chose. And, and we objectively did this because we had worked with Chris for so long that we had a look at every, every bit of it and we discussed it a great length because we didn't want to just go forward like this. But we knew that the station would keep running at that time. And if he was gonna, Chris would take it at the interim. And then if you wanted to post a position again, and then you could have another new manager in there if that you want, but at least the station would be running. It's not running now. And I, and I'm, I'm a little concerned about it. So, back to my question, is it going to run like it did in the previous? Are the board meetings going to be televised? Are the same kind of programs that were being put on, are they going to be done this way and in this manner?
I believe they will. I mean, they, right now, I guess, we are in an interim of change, is the way I'm looking at it. And I think the board is looking at it the same way. We plan on being up and running. We haven't made a full-time position, or I should say, Paul hasn't made a full-time position yet.
But we have an interim manager right now. He has to set this up. He has to get this going, which it has not.
Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest that.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Chairman, there have been a number of questions raised. As you point out, we're in a period of transition. The advisory committee is looking for some sense of direction as to where the operation is going. And I'd suggest, rather than try to attempt that here, that Paul meet with either the chair and/or the advisory committee and perhaps the interim station manager and kinda go over where we are today and where we see us heading in the future.
All right.
Put everybody at least on the same page. And I think there'll probably be a little hiccup here for a bit until we get things settled and a new station manager in place. But I think it'd be helpful if you're all communicating and talking from the same page.
Right.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat.
Oh, I deserve a candy for that one, thank you.
Paul, do you have anything else?
No, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Under old business, we have the DPW contractor, Mr. Contractor, contract. If you would like to speak on that. You were involved with it more than any of us.
Let me get ahold of it first. Let me, let me use it and I'll talk from there. Our contract with the two DPW unions, the superintendents and laborers, expired on 30 June. We began several months ago discussions about contract terms. We subsequently entered mediation and in turn had a few sessions following that mediation. And as of yesterday or last night, I think we're, we're finally closing on, on terms. I have here the memorandum of agreement between the town and Teamsters 404 for both Unit A and Unit B agreements. The agreement proposed here, it was drafted by the union representative, coincides with each and every one of the things that we had previously agreed to in terms of the pay, the terms. It's a three-year contract, 2% COLA cost of living increase each year. We've made some modifications to handling workers' compensation. We did some administrative cleanup here with regard to probationary employees successfully completing their terms and when their date of seniority starts. We increased the meal allowance a couple dollars to 15. The boot allowance is now $150. Clothing allowance, $4.50. It's a three-year contract. And then we did some other administrative cleanup in that the mechanic was earlier in the superintendent's agreement under there, and we've changed that, placed him now in the laborer's contract. And we, again, as we have in the past, long ago, committed to developing some clean break room plan for the, for the project, for DPW at the highway garage. That's still on the table. And given these changes, which are all consistent with the terms we previously met and agreed on as a board, I would recommend that the board adopt and approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of Hatfield and Teamsters Local 404 for a new contract effective one July and a three-year term.
That's a motion, Jeff?
That's a motion.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Thank you, Jeff. You're on a good job.
Thanks for the.
Is there an original to this anywhere?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, this is. That's the original? All right.
All right, well, we could sign this after.
Yep. Okay, now, the Pioneer Valley EMS contract, I think we, I read through that and.
I, I read through it and they didn't change any wording in there.
Actually, I believe they did.
The wording that we talked about, that there wouldn't be a charge.
They did.
They, it, it, it doesn't say that they're not charging. I believe it says, once we get the money, we then turn that money over to them. And if we don't get the money, we don't.
But it doesn't say that in here.
It does.
It basically does, yeah.
Maybe I'm, yeah, go ahead.
Section 7.3?
7.3? Maybe I'm overlooking something here.
Read it carefully.
Yeah. The last sentence was added, and, yeah, it's, it's, it's not the clearest statement in the world, but what it means, it says, upon Hat, upon Hatfield ambulance being paid for the patient's third-party payers, including Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement, checks will be assigned to Pioneer Valley EMS. So what that means is that they get paid while we get paid. If, if we don't get paid, they don't get paid.
Okay, as, as long as that's what it means, because it doesn't say that.
Right, that's, I mean, that's how I took it. If, if we're not getting paid, they're not gonna get paid.
It's not the clearest statement in the world.
But I just don't wanna see a, a bill come in down the road that we owe them $10,000.
And then talking with Greg Gagnon, with the ambulance, you know, he asked for this language and quite frankly, surprising to me, you know, Pioneer Valley didn't have any problem with it. So anyways, that, that, that language was added.
I move to approve the advanced life support affiliation agreement with Pioneer Valley EMS and the town of Hatfield.
Motion's made.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to sign this?
Paul, again, he must have the original somewhere.
We need to sign these, we need to sign an original somewhere. I don't have an original. We'll just pick one.
All right.
We didn't bring this up, Paul.
Oh.
The goals and objectives, we want to talk a little bit about that now, on how we want to proceed.
All right. We all set with it? Did you go over these again?
The goals and objectives?
Yeah.
The objectives? I'm, I'm okay with it.
Do you have anything?
Well, I'm okay with what's here. The only thing that I'm not okay with is the amount of, the quantity or the, the number that we're gonna be giving.
There should be three or four, you're right.
Four out of the, the seven or eight or 10, like Phil's got 10 of them there. I mean, if you gave him 10, it's like, it's, it's not gonna happen. So, three, six.
Well, I thought we were gonna talk.
Actually, I.
I thought we were gonna talk to each one.
Each one on everything here.
On theirs. I mean, for, as a, as a.
What I mean is.
As a tool to begin the conversation, I think we've got something there to work with. Whether or not, as a result of that conversation, all of those stay in there, probably not. For example, there's one about Phil and communication. There's probably no one has greater communication with the community and the board about every single thing that's done in DPW. So there's some things that'll probably come out of there. There's some things like doing the performance reports. Well, that's just.
It's blanket across.
Yeah, it's blanket across everybody. It's just part of your job.
That's a big goal in itself. I mean, even if you gave everybody just that one goal.
Well, they need more than.
For the year, okay, that would, it'd take up a good half a year to get that done, okay? And put it together because there's a lot of questions with that. So, you know, my question is, do we just go down through each one and say, okay, this one, this one, and this one?
We can do that, I mean, if you want. I'm okay with the town accountant, since I do.
Yeah, he's got four and that, that would be, that, that would be about, I, I think that, I don't think there should be any more than five, let me put it that way.
The fire chief, he, and I've had an exchange with him because I gave him what I had. He's okay with the first one about strengthening relationships. He's okay with expanding daytime coverage. He's okay with setting up this emergency management refresher training for us and others, department heads. And he asked to put in this last one about resolving training and meeting space needs. Now, the other ones, you all suggested, and it's probably a good idea to, this other one here you had about developing, where, where, where do you think you're headed? Tell us, tell us.
The long, short, long, mid-range goals.
Where are you headed? And maybe we can make our operating and capital budget planning help facilitate the, that longer-term plan.
I think each, each department should have that goal.
That's fine.
You know.
Now, whether we put in prepare and perform evaluation reports, I, I would drop this complete unfinished capital projects. I mean, they're, we expect them to.
Well, on part of that performance evaluation, we're gonna have to lead, to take the lead on that.
Well, we're, I was gonna talk to Paul because before, it was a few weeks ago, remember, I was talking, we were thinking of getting somebody come in. But I said, wait till after July because we're gonna have.
We have it scheduled in August.
So it is, it's all set to go?
It's, it's, it's August 1st.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah.
And that, everybody comes in, we talk about performance reviews and how they're done and how they're.
An hour and a half, hour and a half, yeah, hour and a half training session.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment about this? Instead of sitting here going through them all, I mean, every department head received what it is. Maybe the best way to kinda streamline this thing is let the department head come back with what he thinks the goals that you've put on here he can maybe achieve or what he's comfortable with, instead of sitting here trying to say yes, no, yes, no. Because I know like my, like Ed had said, I'm minus 10, you know, I can surely narrow it down to four, so, or five. But, you know, I mean, that's something that I think that I could probably achieve in the next year. But I think that the long-term plan should be, like you have said, in everyone. I think that's, you know, a goal that you should know.
Anytime that I've ever dealt with goals here, okay? The, the head, department head comes up or the, the, like, we come up with what we want for goals, what we're planning for goals. Then we sit down with the department and say, these are the ones we outlined that we'd like to see. And gives them a chance to go over it and they're saying, I mean, Phil has the opportunity to say, well, that's just, I just can't achieve that. And, you know, this is why I can't achieve it. So then we have to make a decision, do we really want that one or take something else out, away from it? So they have a right, and I think that's where you're coming in, leading with them, to go over the goals that we select to go on there. So, I mean, that's the way the process works when I used to do that.
Well, we just.
Because you may end up with just one out of 10 because that's the only one that you think, you know, that you can achieve.
Would you like to continue?
Just run through them quickly.
All right, on, on the police, I, I would say on fire chief, take out the complete capital projects. I mean, that's just.
Well, we, we just discussed his contract with him. He's pretty well all set, again, he said he.
Police chief, again, Tom has seen this and he agreed with it, provide regular activity updates, not just to the board of selectmen, but on camera so the town knows what's going on. Strengthen staff capacity. Now, again, we could have him come in with a two-year, his near-term and longer-term plans for the department where, where he sees it going and things we need to be doing to support that. I don't know if you want to put in the evaluation reports, that's just something we're expecting from everybody. This other thing I thought was just something you could ask him to do as opposed to, if, if there's some real issue about how he's staffing. I mean, it would seem to me the police chief ought to be able to orchestrate his own staff the best that he, he sees fit. Like, you have here existing members so that duty time does not overlap. Well, there may be times when Tom's in court, well, he'd want one of his other full-time folks here.
But would, would, now we've got him, we've got, and two new officers. So, I mean, to me, are we sure that there's not anybody gonna be sitting down there in the room for, you know, three hours overlapping each other? That's, that's the kind of question that that is. Okay, what kind of a plan and how are you gonna structure it? We're not asking that, you know, what hours you're gonna be sitting there, but are you gonna have a, you know, a split shift? Or how does it work? How, you know, I mean, with three people on the department now, I'd like to know how it's gonna work.
I'm, I'm just saying as a overall objective for the whole fiscal year, it seems that we could sit down with Tom.
And just use, just as conversation.
In 10 minutes, understand, okay, here's his plan for how he's gonna manage his workforce.
But that was the key, to make sure the plan is in place. Make sure a plan is in place.
It's, yeah, I think it's a fair discussion point, but not something we need to give a rating on.
Okay.
DPW, execute approved capital projects and in his case, he, he has more than, a lot more than those. Seek grant support for the water sewer infrastructure project. And define a set of highway projects sufficiently to compete for placement funding in the transportation improvement program. I stuck that in there. You know, unless you get your project in the tip, the transportation improvement program, you don't. you don't compete for federal funding. We did that for Elm, from Maple, excuse me, Elm Street, we got federal funding, and we got it paid for. But unless you have the plan, you're not even in competition. Lead the requirements definition for town hall facility improvements, whether they be here in the building and/or external. Act on the breakroom at Highway Garage. We've committed for years to the union to do something along that. And then, again, do we, do we wanna put in the evaluation reports under folks? Is that needed here, or is that something we... I'm not sure what the more efficient in communications between boards. He's here at every meeting, and I think we know more about what goes on in DPW than any other activity in town. Cost analysis, I'm all for cost analysis, but they need to be targeted, and I would suggest any cost analysis be under the, led by the town administrator, someone whose objective, who's, doesn't have a stake in the outcome, so...
So he would keep the master sheet, but he would get the figures from...
He'd get data and get input from whomever.
Is that fair enough, Paul?
Well, actually, we've got that in here. The ambulance director, again, expand daytime coverage, which is very much needed, would help with revenues. I know he's working that, and that's a tough one. Regular updates, I think some of the issues we have could be mitigated if we had more recurring updates from, from the ambulance. This other one here, though, is suspected harassment. I mean, is that something...
Where did that come from? I don't understand what that's all about.
If, it would seem, if there's a requirement that we have in our requirement for reporting sexual harassment ought to be in our human resource policy.
Right.
Discrimination, that ought to be in our human resource policy, and I believe it is.
Yeah, well, as you recall, you know, I went through this and removed all those items that I felt were basically part of, you know, normal, everyday...
Compliance with standards, kinda stuff.
Compliance with standards, normal, everyday, job description type of activities. And I felt that this was one of them. I do believe I, because this was listed in all of them, I removed them from the other department heads, and for some reason or other, I left this one in, and I think it was just by mistake.
Yeah, it's covered elsewhere.
Yeah.
Cost analysis, again, if we're gonna do any cost analysis, and we ought to be looking at, we ought to be targeting them, that's exactly what we're gonna do, but they need to be queued up under the auspices of the town administrator. Again, plans and goals, that's good, you know, where are they headed? And evaluation reports, if you wanna keep that in there, I don't know.
Well, that's more of an expectation. We're expecting them to do it, but with our help. This is almost like...
Maybe the first time around, we put it in there.
That's exactly, well, I was gonna say, maybe next year, we put it in for their goal, that they get it completed. Okay, this year, we're in a learning curve, so everybody will be taught it, they move forward to that, and then those that haven't completed, that'd be their goal, to complete for next year, okay? Because we're gonna have to do our work, too, and train them on how to do all this.
Yeah. It can be done. Town administrator, again, here's, here's where I captured all those other things about cost studies. Identify and propose opportunities to prove the efficiency and effectiveness of town Complete his procurement certification training. Paul's previously been certified, I believe, and this is just...
Well, I never, I, you know, was the chief procurement officer in Lanesboro for 13 years, but I was never, I was never certified.
Okay, so...
Actually, I've, just while we're on that...
He could probably go teach the course.
Yeah. But while we're on that topic, I have signed up...
Great.
There's actually, I thought it was, it was one three-day class, there's actually three, three-day classes that you have to take.
So it's gonna be three times in a year that you're gonna have to get...
Yeah, there's three different classes. And fortunately, they're held live in Boston, but they also have a conferencing center at Gateway Regional School District in Huntington, which is a lot closer than going to Boston, so that'll work.
That's good.
But there's, yeah, there's three separate classes, they're each three days apiece, at $450 a pop.
Yeah. And we're, we're gonna commit to that, to get you there.
Okay.
Update the town HR policy. Actually, it's in pretty good shape, but it just, there's things, laws changed, it just, someone needs to just take a hard look at it. I know town clerk, town treasurer has several...
She's got a few.
Well, also, you'll find some in your office somewhere, that Marlene and Jeff Ritter also drafted charters for the BOs appointed committees, so they know what they're doing. In fact, you know, when we appoint them to committees, we ought to be handing them a copy of the charter for their particular groups, so... Paul's already drafted some comments about the senior tax work-off program, but like to get that, we had that passed by town meeting a few years back, and like to be able to kick that off. I'm not sure about familiarizing himself with the financial operation. I mean, Tom, Paul, I think it's very conver, it's...
That's part of his job.
Part of his basic job.
Yeah.
Tracking projects, well, again, that's, you know, that's one of the things he does. I was, I'd also make that same argument for the next, except it's something that really needs to be done, purging and reorganizing the file.
That's a goal.
Yeah, it probably ought to stay in, for one time. It's, I mean, you have to depend on personalities and who to call, where to find things. Technology plan?
What is meant by, by your technology plan?
IT. IT, phones.
Yeah, this is already in the works. Peregus is doing it for us. In reading through their contract, it's actually part of what...
Their deliverables.
Their deliverables. So basically what it is, is they've started doing the inventory, so they're gonna inventory all the computers and monitors, and then come, basically come back with a plan for when these...
Scheduled replacements.
When they need replacing, and so, Ritter had that, yeah.
Yeah.
Ritter had that.
It's basically a capital, you know, a capital plan for, for IT.
Right, because every year, we appropriate that sum of money in there to buy new computers and update them, and...
Right. We've got, we've got a bunch of computers here that, you know, nobody really, nobody knows how old they are, you know, they've been here long before, you know, some of the employees were here. So, yeah, that was, that issue came to the fore, you know, shortly after I arrived here, you know, some employees asking me about new computers, and, you know, is there, are we gonna do a plan? And I asked if there was a plan, and apparently there never has been, so, yeah, we need to...
I recall Mr. Ritter had one, because he was, he was able to buy computers, and he had updated information back when I...
Well, it's something that I haven't been able to put...
Probably goes into piles.
And nobody else seems to know anything about it either.
All right, so, that's a good one.
It must be in one of those piles there in the TV's office, yeah.
Okay.
The next one, cost analysis, that falls under whatever specific projects we decide be undertaken.
Of Paul operations?
Yeah, under efficiency and effectiveness of town operations.
Instead of just the ambulance, it's going to all...
Right, it's whatever, whichever ones.
Yeah.
Options for suit, well, I, he needs to help us with this, there's no question about that. I'm not sure we can unload this onto Paul. This is...
No, no.
This is a team effort. I mean, we're talking about the youth center school, the housing authority has come, since charter school has dropped out of the picture, too expensive for them to fix it up, and then not own it. The housing authority has come forward with suggestions about an interest, as well as community preservation committee, about using the center school for housing, and we're gonna meet with them on the 24th to be a second time, kind of move the dialogue along. Seems to be well-received, good use of funds, good use of their property, takes care of a whole bunch of problems, eliminates the issues with the use of the fields, competition with the smallest school district in the state, lots of, and serves a useful social purpose. But, so we have something we're looking at, but, you know, it's not just Paul's...
No.
Maybe he can steer this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I added that to the list, just, just knowing that, no, I, you know, this is nothing that I can take on by myself, but, you know, I saw it as something...
A town need.
If and when it started moving, I could see it taking, you know, quite a bit of my time, yeah.
So what I'm looking at is...
It'll be a complicated project.
Town administrator, I was, I just put okay on each one of these here, actually. So just to be clear, the goals that I came up with, and see if we're the same here, complete procurement certification.
The first one, too. You skipped one.
Identify and propose opportunities to improve efficiency and... Okay.
Those are all any of...
And then update the town human resource.
Right, and the charters.
And then the next one I had was purge files, and, and then establish a technology plan, and prepare a cost analysis, so that's six of them.
Well, okay.
I think we ought to stop at five, so I...
The cost analysis goes back up to identify and propose opportunities to improve efficiency and effectiveness of town operations.
Okay, so that's...
Let's all those fit under, tuck under that umbrella.
Okay.
But...
So we can wipe that one out, then?
About staffing coordinator, I plan to implement this in your taxes, which he's working on now, anyway, so, I guess we can...
We do want him to do that.
Let me see here.
So what about, we're gonna have him lead the disposition of center school activity?
You can't give him too much, because he's not gonna be able to complete it.
He's got big shoulders.
Well, he's gonna be working with us, and hopefully the housing authorities.
Well, my suggestion is pick five, and then, no more than five, I don't think you should go more than five.
All right, well, first three, and then purge the files and the technology plan. And he's already working the senior work-off program, so...
But yet, on the, on the cost analysis is important...
That's, that's under the first one.
Oh, okay.
First one.
I gotta cross that off, I'm sorry, yes, you're right. Okay. So that would be five.
Yeah, but what we need to do is help identify if there's specific ones we want examined as potential savings, as opposed to just charging off.
Put them in priority, one, two, three, four, five?
He'll see some things, of course, of business, but...
What we should probably do is get a list of five, each one, and then us, what our priorities would be, and then see how close we are together, and then do a compromise and...
Okay.
And that would be my suggestion.
Because you can't do them all at once.
No.
Okay, so I think that wraps it up for today, except for we will be going back into executive session one more time for, again, contract negotiations with a couple more of our employees, so if one of you wanna make a motion, we can, actually, we can just, I believe, return, because we never...
Okay, I'll move that we enter into executive session under rule three for purposes of contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And we, this time, we will not be returning to open session, and the chair so declares that...
That's number two, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Is it?
Number two is non-person, non-union personnel. Number three is collective bargaining.
All right, non, exemption two, as opposed to three, and we will not be returning to open session.
I'll second that motion. Ed Lasko?
Okay. Motion made, seconded. All in favor, Ed?
Aye.
Adamski, aye.
Boil, aye. Motion to adjourn? Open session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.